Good morning. We want to get started. Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started now. Thank you. We've established our quorum. All the visitors will take their seats. We will get rolling. Before, we haven't had any incidents, but just ask you to please turn your cellphones off or any other electronic device that you have, turn it on silent, please. Thank you so much for your anticipated cooperation. And to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father Chris Walsh of St. Cecilia Parish. He is here today as the guest of Councilman O'Neill. I would ask all guests, visitors, to please rise and members. Thank you.
I had a prayer on my phone and it just disappeared. It's grateful to all of you for your good work for the city of Philadelphia. Lord, we know that in the story of Exodus, there were times when our Jewish sisters and brothers were stuck. They couldn't go forward and they couldn't go back. But what they could do was trust in you and your goodness. And with that, they were unstuck. And so, Lord, we just pray that you send your grace upon the members of this council, on those who serve with them, and on all who have business in this council and in our city today. Lord, there are so many things that keep us stuck. Personal difficulties and illness, animosities and past hurts, sometimes even allegiances to interest groups keep us stuck and keep us from moving forward. And so, like the Israelites of old, we look to your hand to guide us, to get us unstuck, to move us forward. Bless the efforts and desires of each member to produce a city that is going to meet the needs of the citizens of today and tomorrow. Lord, may they be bold and courageous in tackling the many challenges, knowing the power of your hand. And Lord, after you have helped them in your goodness, help our beloved Phillies get unstuck as well. And deliver them to victory. And we make this prayer of you who have unstuck people for generations and will in the days to come, God, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you so much, Father, for that invocation. Counsel will be dismissed. Thank you so much. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 27, 2022. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 27, 2022 be approved.
Thank you. This has been moved improperly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 27, 2022 stand approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And our next order of business is requests for leaves of the absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, on behalf of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
All right. Chair thanks the councilmen. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squiller for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar that were circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for the session of council and require by law subsequently published an amended agenda after the consideration of these matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first readings, the consideration of bill or a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible action by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second. Thank you. This has been moved improperly second that the legislative matter stated by Councilman Squiller may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to recognize two guests that are with us today in council. Both are students who attend schools in the Great Eighth Council District, represented by our colleague Councilmember Cindy Bass. But I'd like to welcome Deslyn Long. He's a senior at Central High School, and he wants to be a history teacher when he grows up. And also, my mentee, Erica Spiller. She is a seventh grader at AB Day School. She wants to be the first African-American female president. She also wants to be a member of Philadelphia City Council to represent her city, state, and country. And one fun fact about Erica is her mother, Marquita, was a fifth grade student of Councilmember Helen Gimm when she was a teacher in elementary school. So stand up to be recognized. We welcome you to Philadelphia City Council.
Thank you so much for being here today. We really appreciate it, as you witness history today. Thank you. Our next order of business is communications, and I would ask the clerk to please read the message from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president, the members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the reappointment of Wendell Anthony Ewing to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Storm Water Rate Board.
Is that it? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of the legislative legislation that is being offered by our members today.
Councilman Thomas offers two bills and one resolution. On behalf of Council President Clark and ordinance, authorizing installation, ownership, replacement, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 1700 through 1720 Arch Street.
Verdict committee.
And on his own behalf, Councilman Thomas offers an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code to add a new chapter, 213400, entitled Youth Name, Image, and Likeness Protection, to establish provisions related to education and counseling for certain Philadelphia youth and their families who are considering licensing publicity rights. Mr. President, Councilman Thomas would like to be recognized on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I want to just take a moment to first and foremost thank all of my colleagues who co-sponsored this bill. If you don't know, name, image, and likeness is the acronym that NIL stands for. And when you look at what's happening all across the country as it relates to collegiate athletes being able to get paid for their name, image, and likeness, we know that it is trickling down to the high school level. We anticipate in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that there will be a vote to allow young people to be able to receive some level of compensation for their image and likeness this December. So to get ahead of that, I wanted to make sure that we offer some protections to young people who might one day get an NIL deal to assure that they have the supports that they need to put them in a position where they're not being taken advantage of. When you think about some of the opportunities that exist, these are opportunities that could change a young person's life. But at the same time, we also know that there's a lot of predatory behavior that exists whenever money is involved. So in order to assure our young people have legal protection, financial support, and other resources when they get an NIL opportunity, this bill will essentially protect them. So I want to just take a moment to thank the CEO of Imhotep, Brother Andre, who's here with us today. He had the opportunity to host us yesterday at the press conference, as well as the number two player in the 2023 class, Imhotep student Justin Edwards. So at the end of the day, we're very excited about the legislation, and we're hoping that it could pass right after the PIAA allows for young people in the city of Philadelphia to receive some type of compensation for their name, image, and likeness. So thank you, Council President, colleagues. Thank you so much for your support, and I look forward to continuing to do the good work to support our young people in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Councilman. Verdict committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating champion of the week, the Imhotep Institute Charter School STEM students and faculty for their heroic work in providing 3D-printed water filters to residents of Jackson, Mississippi in a water quality crisis.
Today's calendar. Sorry. Councilman Thomas. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. And again, I want to take a moment to thank, well, before I say thank you, can everybody who's here from Imhotep please stand up?
All right.
So, so very briefly, while these young people are standing, our promise is a coincidence that we're recognizing them for two different reasons, but we really want to give these young people the recognition that they deserve. These young people took time in their classroom to use 3D printers to create water filters. And not only does it show their talent and their expertise, but the servant leadership spirit in them felt like that wasn't enough. They then traveled down south to supply the water filters to those who were in need, and they also offered an opportunity for those young people down there to learn how to make those water filters themselves. So when we talk about STEM-based initiatives, and when we talk about giving young people the platform and the opportunity to show their intellectual capacity, this is exactly what those young people are doing. So we're excited to have them in council today, and we look forward to hearing from them as we go through our council session. Thank you for being here, young people. Thank you to the facilitators, and of course, thank you to my council colleagues for your support as it relates to this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
Councilman Jones offers an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of 67th Street between Calo Hill Street and Girard Avenue.
Verdict committee.
Councilwoman Gaudier offers an ordinance naming and designating the Mill Creek Recreation Center located at 4700 Brown Street as the Tiffany Fletcher Recreation Center.
Verdict committee.
Councilwoman Bass offers a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring November as National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month in Philadelphia, and honoring organizations, advocates, and city workers for their work supporting Philadelphia's most vulnerable.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the month of November as Financial Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Also today's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is reports from committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Rules reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which is referred Bill Number 220418 entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning for revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes. And Bill Number 220769 entitled an ordinance authorizing animal husbandry use on a certain location within an area bounded by Reservoir Drive, Fountain Green Drive, Kelly Drive, Girard Avenue, and 33rd Street. And Bill Number 220776 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, the Montgomery County Line, the Bucks County Line, Interstate 95, Grant Avenue, and Roosevelt Boulevard. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 220418, 220769, and 220776.
Thank you. This has been moved improperly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of this bill, Number 220418, 220769, and 220776. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Thomas for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports out 26 bills with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 210745 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 13th Street and Oregon Avenue. And Bill Number 210928 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 122900 of the Philadelphia Code, contractor parking, to revise the requirements and limitations related to contractor parking permits. And Bill Number 22033 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 17th Street and Carpenter Street, South 24th Street and Christian Street, League Street and South 23rd Street, Carpenter Street to South 18th Street, Nordane Street to South 21st Street, Kimball Street to South 24th Street, Webster Street to South 16th Street, Monroe Street to South 18th Street. And Bill Number 220454 entitled an ordinance authorizing the vacating of Kruston Road from Norwalk Road to its terminus southwardly therefrom. And Bill Number 220579 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Woodbine Avenue between 76th Street and 77th Street. And Bill Number 220580 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Columbia Avenue between 59th Street and 60th Street. And Bill Number 220637 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Morelle Avenue. And Bill Number 220663 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking restrictions near various locations, including recreation centers, libraries, parks, and schools in the Fourth Council District. And Bill Number 220735 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 120 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Sharwood Street and Harland Street each from 22nd Street to 23rd Street. And Bill Number 220737 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 17th Street and Dickinson Street, Ellsworth Street and South 20th Street, Federal Street and South 15th Street, Federal Street and South 20th Street, Federal Street and South 21st Street, Federal Street and South 22nd Street, Federal Street and South 23rd Street, and Alter Street. And Bill Number 220738 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Fitzwater Street and South 18th Street, Cater Street and South 19th Street, Taney Street and South Street, South 17th Street and Fitzwater Street, Cleveland Street and Carpenter Street. And Bill Number 220739 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Titan Street and South 19th Street, Oakford Street and South 21st Street, Wharton Street and Point Breeze Avenue, South 15th Street and Wharton Street, Reed Street and South 18th Street to 22nd Street, and South 17th Street and Reed Street. And Bill Number 220740 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Webster Street and Broad Street, South 11th Street and Bainbridge Street, Kimball Street, and South 11th Street. And Bill Number 220741 entitled an ordinance authorizing the plotting upon City Plan Number 388 of a right-of-way for various public utility purposes in the vicinity of the intersection of West Crown Avenue and Morelle Avenue. And Bill Number 220771 entitled an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 45S and abandonment of a certain right-of-way for reserve for water main and gas main purposes extending from 17th Street to 18th Street north of Hartraff Street. And Bill Number 220772 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 308 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Nordane Street from 15th Street to its terminus eastwardly therefrom. And Bill Number 220773 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of North 75th Street between Brookhaven Road and Brentwood Road. And Bill Number 220774 entitled an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on Gorgas Lane between Ridge Avenue and Lawton Street. And Bill Number 220777 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Pine Road from Bloomfield Avenue to Shady Lane. And Bill Number 220778 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Philmon Avenue from Byberry Road to Bustleton Avenue. And Bill Number 220811 entitled an ordinance authorizing the owner of 3542 Calamay Street to install, own, and maintain various encroachments at such property. And Bill Number 220812 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Marlin Road between Jefferson Street and Lebanon Avenue. And Bill Number 220814 entitled an ordinance amending Section 12919 of the Philadelphia Code entitled on-street parking of boats, motorhomes, truck campers, semi-trailers, truck tractors, and vending carts, to provide prohibitions on semi-trailer and truck tractor parking in the 10th District of Council. And Bill Number 220829 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Columbia Avenue and Frankfurt Avenue, Belgrade Street and Susquehanna Avenue, Belgrade Street and Palmer Street, Howard Street and Thompson Street, Howard Street and Girard Avenue, Oxford Street and Frankfurt Avenue, Moyer Street and Palmer Street, Thompson Street and North Third Street. And Bill Number 220830 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North 2nd Street and Master Street, North 2nd Street and Thompson Street, Pelthorpe Street and Girard Avenue, Master Street and Girard Avenue, Iron Street and Belgrade Street, Palmer Street and Thomas Street, Hancock Street and Girard Avenue, Lawrence Street and Girard Avenue. And Bill Number 220831 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Page Street and North 18th Street, Monument Street and North 17th Street, Diamond Street and North 17th Street, North 16th Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue, Bouvier Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue, Bouvier Street and Montgomery Avenue, North 18th Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this bill, of the 26 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. This has been moved improperly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the reading on this first day of the 26 bills that were just read by the clerk. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Those bills will be on our first reading calendar today. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be on their second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. There are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, so the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions that are on our final passes calendar today.
Those and resolutions are being called up from second reading to final passes calendars today. Numbers, 220850, 220875, 220876, 2208, excuse me, correction, 208, 220875, 220876, 220877, 220878, 220879, 220880, 220881, 220882, 220887, 220888, 220869, 220660, 220658, 220662, and 220813. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these resolutions and bills on the final passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at today's session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up, it's time to do that now, so you can essentially go through the sarge of the arms at the table set up for this purpose in the hallway just outside the council chamber. Once you have signed up, you will be called in order which your name appears on the signup sheet. Today, we have ideal circumstances, so you have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. In order to be fair, for all those wishing to speak, we intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the device on the podium. When the light turns green, it is your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines to conclude your remarks. Once that timeline has passed, we will disconnect the microphone, and we would ask you to pass the podium on to the next speaker. We also reserve the right pursuant to the rules of council to limit repetitious comments on same-subject matter. Mr. Decker, before I ask you to call the speaker, I would like to thank everyone who has attended our council session today, and particularly those who wish to have public comment today. We really appreciate you coming down. Thank you so much. Mr. Decker, please call the name of the first witness we'd like to speak today.
The first speaker we have today, Mr. President, is Ed O'Donnell, commenting on 220634.
Mr. O'Donnell? Right here. Someone check in the caucus room? Right here? Okay. Next name, Mr. Decker.
Peter Winslow, commenting on 220322.
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome back, Councilman Johnson. My name is Peter Winslow. I'm a Philadelphia resident. I speak to you today as President of Smart Collaboration LLC, as a member of the Philadelphia Public Banking Coalition, and as a candidate recommended by City Council to Mayor Kenny for appointment to the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority. Thank you, President Clark and members of the council for this opportunity to speak in support of Bill Number 220322, which was introduced by councilmembers Gaudier and Brooks. Thank you very much for that introduction. This proposed ordinance deals with the disposition of surplus city property, real estate, for purposes of transfer to community land trusts. And community land trusts are one of the ways, the mechanisms for addressing the financial and the housing crisis that we have in the city today. So I'm here to invite all members of the council, staff, members of the public, to attend a Zoom discussion in the form of the initiation of the People's Economic Forum, which is being presented by the Philadelphia Public Banking Coalition and Philadelphia Neighbored Networks for the purpose of exploring the causes and the potential solutions to our housing crisis. our housing crisis. Our discussion will focus on the legacy that we face of systemic racism that has been embedded in redlining, both historic and de facto, and continuing, and how this has led to the commodification of housing, where housing is, has become an asset class that is for the benefit of investors who don't live in Philadelphia, who are not part of our community, to examine this and to examine some of the ways, including community land trusts, that we can address this problem and work together for its solution. And I think in advance, Councilmember Gaudier, who will be in Chicago at the time, but will be reporting on the national discussion taking place about housing, because she'll be at a conference for that purposes. So I will leave for the Sargent of Arms to distribute to members of council the flyer that describes the PPBC People's Economic Forum on November 17th. Thank you so much for listening to me, and go Phillies.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Obona Hagens, commenting on 220654.
Morning.
Obona Hagens, lifelong Philadelphian. I've spoken about this bill 220654 a few times, introduced by councilmembers Gilmore Richardson, Driscoll Jones, Bass, and Squiller. I just want to let you know that according to an article in the Council for Strong America, the organization Fight Crime indicates that after-school is the prime time for juvenile crime in Pennsylvania. They also indicate that after-school programs keep kids safe. There's an article that was written in the September issue of Time Magazine where there was a young man in Philadelphia, 14-years-old, who was roughed up by the police shortly after the 10:00 p.m. curfew. And according to the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, unlike adult crimes, violent crimes committed by youth between the ages of seven and 17 peak in the late afternoon. So what am I saying? I'm saying that enacting a 10:00 p.m. curfew is far less effective than funding youth programs and opportunities directly for the youth of Philadelphia. Just like the young people at M-HOTEP, you know, you see where they are being trained properly. When our youth are trained properly, when they have the proper opportunities, they're less likely to be out committing any types of crimes. And I want to reiterate that it's only a small amount of youth who are out there committing crimes. And to give this bill for all the youth in Philadelphia is really not fair to the youth in Philadelphia. So I encourage you to find more creative ways to promote youth creativity and to improve the education system here in Philadelphia. We know that M-HOTEP is a charter school, but our Philadelphia Public Schools report came out that they're at the bottom of almost every list. So we need to do something more to encourage and inspire our young people as opposed to restricting them from being out. And I'm not saying that they should be out at that time, but constitutionally, they should be able to go out if they have to, and to be possibly caught up by police who are just very aggressive, it's better to just, you know, nip it in the bud by creating these programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Shirley Posey, commenting on a resolution today introduced by Councilman Thomas honoring M-HOTEP Charter STEM School students.
My name is Shirley Posey, the Director of STEM for M-HOTEP Institute Charter High School. Thank you so much for this opportunity and space. I would like to paint a picture for you all. Did anyone here have to brush their teeth, but prior to brushing your teeth, boil the water to brush your teeth? Or perhaps even turning on the showerhead and having to intentionally close your mouth because there are so many contaminants in the water? Down in Jackson, Mississippi, that's how they've been living for decades, with black and brown water. And the United Nations just released a statement saying that over 3 million people around the world are dying from unhealthy water. Now, in 2022, this should not be the case in the United States of America. At M-HOTEP Charter High School, Isaiah, Jabri, Zakaya, Zamaira, we have Felton, Kenny, Musa, Asia, and Montrelle, they answered the call to go down to Jackson, Mississippi and help out. We used our STEM-based practices by 3D-printing water filters at our institution, flew down to Jackson and worked with the medical students there. The people were so filled with gratitude that ABC Jackson filmed it. And when they aired the story that night, that thousands of miles away, that scholars, M-HOTEPians scholars came down from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania to solve this crisis, guess what happened the next morning? The mayor of Jackson scheduled an emergency press conference to address the issue. So our young people are looking at environmental issues and solving them through STEM-based practices. Not only that, we're looking at the fact that our institution resides in a food desert. This food desert also goes hand in hand with the fact that we get 60% of our food from California. So they're in a drought right now, so we're in a food desert, and then in addition to that, there's food insecurity. How are we solving that? Our STEM ambassadors with Project NEA, we are going to be the first school in the city of Philadelphia to have a smart pod farm. In this 40-foot container, we will be able to grow 2.5 acres' worth of vegetables weekly. You ask how? Through STEM and through innovative technology, where we will have engineered sensors to basically monitor the pH water, to monitor the light levels, and to monitor the amount of carbon dioxide. So not only that, we're going to be partnering with the grocery stores and making sure that everyone has a right to healthy food, and also, we have to look at the fact, when will this issue come knocking in the city of Philadelphia? And we want to make sure that everyone has a right to clean water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Musa Wilson.
Good morning. My name is Musa Wilson. Wait, can you guys hear me? My name is Musa Wilson. I'm a STEM ambassador. I'm a COYO executive and a National Honor Society member at M-HOTEP Institute Charter High School. But today, I'm just a normal civilian here to talk to you all. As a community, who are we to deny people of our black and brown skin complexions the right to clean water? Who are we as a community to deny aid and help to those who need it when we are in a position to give? Not at M-HOTEP Institute Charter High School. With these water filters, we created a project titled Project Cuji Chagaliah, which means self-determination. It's a principle that we follow at our institute, because we are determined to help the lives of everybody who we can. If we are in a position to give aid and lend assist, we will. So that's what we did in Jackson, Mississippi. With our lead STEM engineer, we 3D-printed water filters that not only change the color of the water, it makes it healthier for you, it eliminates the harmful bacteria and pathogens in the water, and overall improves the water quality. As my STEM director, Sister Shirley, said, water is very essential in our everyday life and living, so we need clean water in order to live. Within that, we had an amazing time down in Jackson, Mississippi. We saved so many lives. We met a man who was boiling his water for 32 years, I believe it was? 32 years. And we, I wouldn't say eliminated, but we've assisted in diminishing some of that systemic racism, some of those issues, within a matter of hours. Also, as my STEM director, Sister Shirley, said, the next morning, I believe it was, they held a press conference to address the situation in Jackson, Mississippi. This is the change that young people are supposed to be making. Anybody could be cool and go out and pick up a gun or sell drugs or do any things of that nature, but there's more ways to be cool. You can be cool helping your community. You could be cool saving a life. You could be cool being a role model for the people who need it. When you turn on the TV, a lot of people like us, they see heroes who play basketball or only in music. But we could be heroes in STEM. We could be heroes in the world. I don't want to take too much of your time, but I do ask you that, moving forward, do you hear our voices and do you encourage your young people, those people in your lives, to help make a change just as we did? Because we're not the only ones to, I mean, who can do it. All of you, all of your children, and your children's children are more than capable of changing lives. My name is Musa Wilson. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Kenaton Walkley.
Morning, everyone. My name is Kenaton Fuzli Jr. I'm a scholar athlete and lead STEM ambassador at M-HOTEP Charter. I'm here to bring to you guys the experience we had in Jackson, Mississippi. Over time, we learned that Jackson's pipes were 120-years-old, and that's very, very, very bad. And comparing it to Philadelphia's, ours is 80. So I'm here to talk to you about what is for us, how are our waters going to be once they get to 120-years-old? What is the color of our water? How would our water be detailed, and would it be dirty like Jackson, Mississippi's? And what me and my fellow STEM ambassadors did, we changed the narrative, we changed much lives down in Jackson, Mississippi. We got the chance to view ambition prep as middle school down in Jackson, Mississippi, and we donated a 3D printer, and we just showed them like it's other ways you can change lives and change the narrative, not just in sports, or like Musa said, being involved in street violence and other things that causes trouble to the city. I'm Kenaton Fuzli Jr., and that's all the time I have.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We really appreciate it.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, and thank you to all our speakers today. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 220850.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2317 Ridge Avenue, located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, on your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220875.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2214 North Orkney Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, again, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220876.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2527 North Hancock Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. On your behalf.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, resolution number 220877.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 318 North American Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
And again, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. And again, Mr. President, on your behalf, I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220878.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2646 Pailthorpe Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220879.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2521 North Hancock Street and 2522 Mutter Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220880.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 525 West North Street, located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220881.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 800 West Cumberland Street in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, on your behalf, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion passes. Mr. Decker, 220882.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 911, 913, 915, 919, 921, 923, and 925 West Auburn Street, 3812, 3826, 3834, 3846, 3850, and 3861 North Comack Street, 2317 Ridge Avenue, and 1436 North Seventeenth Street in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 220887.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2501, 2855, and 2857 Amber Street, 2143, 2155, and 2157 East Birch Street, 2134, and 2172 East Cambry Street, 2103, and 2107 East Cumberland Street, 2107 East Dakota Street, 2478, and 2480 Emerald Street, 2022 East Fletcher Street, 1929, 1935, 1943, and 2215 through 17 East Harold Street, 2637, 2639, 2643, 2645, and 2649 Jenny Street, 2536 Jasper Street, 2639, 2641, 2643, and 2653 Kensington Avenue, 2068 East Monmouth Street, 1844 East Oakdale Street, 2140, 2151, 2153, and 2156 East Orleans Street, 2646, and 2658 Ritter Street, 2089 East Somerset Street, 2106, 2133, 2135, and 2250 through 2252 East Williams Street, located in the 1st Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 220888.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2037, 2038, 2039, 2040, 2042, 2044, 2047, 2050, 2052, 2056, 2058, 2060, 2062, 2066, 2068, and 2201 through 29 East Williams Street and 2306 Collins Street, located in the 1st Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 220659A.
An ordinance amending bill number 220401, entitled an ordinance amending chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions to correct a typographical error in stating the period in which a reduction in the resident net profits tax rate is applicable.
Thank you. This bill has been read on two different days. Question now, shall the bill pass finally? The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
My apologies, Mr. President. Aye.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are thirteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members present, pointing in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 220-660.
An ordinance amending bill number 210-284 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter nineteen twenty-six hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Tax by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions to fix a mistake in identifying the tax year to which a tax reduction applies, so that the tax reduction applies in fiscal year 2023.
This bill had been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Brooks. Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are thirteen, the nays are zero. Majority of members present, pointing in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 220-658.
An ordinance to amend title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of chapter fourteen five hundred entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating the NBO Nelson Brown Peoples Village Overlay District.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Jones for an amendment to bill number 220-658.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I would like to offer an amendment to bill number 220-658. A copy of that amendment has been circulated to all members, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 220-658 has been amended, and bill number 220-658 as amended will be placed on our second reading and final pass's calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 220-662.
An ordinance to amend title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of chapter fourteen five hundred entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating the NHO Nehemiah Homes Overlay District.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for an amendment to bill number 220-662.
Thank you again, Mr. President. On your behalf, I would like to offer an amendment to bill number 220-662. A copy of that amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption.
Thank you. It is all in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And bill number 220-662 has been amended, and bill number 220-662 as amended will be placed on our second reading and final pass's calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 220-813.
An ordinance amending bill number 220-051A entitled An Ordinance Amending Section nine forty-one sixteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled 2021 Public Health Emergency Leave to Establish Additional Leave Time Under Certain Circumstance, Modify Existing Provisions Concerning the Paid Sick Leave, and Make Technical Changes. To clarify, the modifications to the Philadelphia Code intended to be made by the bill and make technical changes.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks. Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are thirteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members present, pointing in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring and congratulating champion of the week, the MOTEP Institute Charter School STEM students and faculty for their heroic work in providing 3D-printed water filters to residents of Jackson, Mississippi in a water quality crisis introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I think that their testimony moved-
Sorry, Thomas. I'm sorry. I think I said Councilman Johnson. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas. I'm sorry. My fault.
Thank you, Council President. I think their testimony moved all of us, and I'm glad they're here today, and we appreciate the work, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
A resolution recognizing and honoring November as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month in Philadelphia and honoring organizations, advocates, and city workers for their work supporting Philadelphia's most vulnerable, introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the month of November as Financial Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. It is time for speeches, and are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start by publicly congratulating my brother and my colleague, Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson, whose victory was. I am so ecstatic for his family, and I'm glad to have you back. I'd like to speak about Tiffany Fletcher, a community member and Parks and Recreation staffer. Thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry, my phone's not working.
Thank you. I'd like to speak on Tiffany Fletcher, the community member and Parks and Rec staffer who tragically lost her life after being caught in a shootout at the Mill Creek Recreation Center. I want to once again extend my sincere condolences to Tiffany Fletcher's family. I am just so sorry for their loss. Since this tragedy happened in September, I've spoken to many people who knew and loved Tiffany, and one thing that everyone could agree on was how big her heart was. That big heart was a big part of the reason that she took on the role with Parks and Recreation, maintaining the pool at the Mill Creek Recreation Center. It was important to her that the kids in her community had a clean and safe playground all year round and access to a pool so that they could cool off and have fun during the summer. Because she spent so much of her time supporting her community, this council recognized Tiffany for her work with Parks and Rec and the impact that that work had on the larger community with a citation at her funeral service. Today, I also introduced a bill to rename the Mill Creek Recreation Center to the Tiffany Fletcher Recreation Center in her honor. It seemed fitting to do this as a permanent reminder of the woman with the big heart who dedicated her time and her career to investing in our children. It is my job as a council member and the job of this entire body as elected officials, along with other elected officials in Philadelphia, to stop the gun violence in this city that took Tiffany's life and has taken four hundred sixteen other lives so far in 2022. And I know that there is nothing that I could say or that anyone can say that would take away the pain that Tiffany's family and so many others are feeling as a result of the senseless violence that's going on in our communities. But by renaming the Mill Creek Recreation Center in her honor, it's my hope that this center will stand as a permanent reminder of the love that Tiffany had for her community and that her life mattered. I'd also like to thank and recognize all of our hardworking staff at Philadelphia Parks and Recreation for everything that they do on an everyday basis to make public spaces safe for children and families in Philadelphia. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Okay, thank you, Council President. I too want to welcome back my big brother, Kenyatta Johnson, and welcome you back to chambers. And I want you to know that your test is just a testimony to show many what happens when you put and you keep God first. I also wanted to make the announcement that this week, two of our new Community Evening Resource Centers have opened and are servicing youth in the city of Philadelphia. The Community Evening Resource Centers have expanded to now four sites, and these centers were made possible by all of you colleagues in the partnership that we have with DHS and the Philadelphia Police Department. The centers are a community-based prevention tool to help keep youth engaged from 7:00 PM to 2:00 AM, and the evening programming includes homework support, yoga classes, sports, cooking instructions, movie nights, drone classes, financial literacy classes, and peer mediation. Programs also emphasize conflict resolution, violence prevention, mentoring, and service linkages for the young people and their families. The sites that are now servicing youth in the city of Philadelphia, and I'll name them with their respective police divisions, are the Juvenile Justice Center in the 8th Council District, 100 West Coulter Street, 19144. We also have I-Day, which is the Institute for the Development of African-American Youth in your council district, Council President, located at 2305 North Broad Street, 19132. And as always, we have our first two Community Evening Resource Centers, Dixon House at Greater Philadelphia Community Alliance, formerly known as Diversified Community Services, in Councilmember Johnson's district, and then also Community of Compassion at 62nd and Cedar, in Councilmember Gaultier's district. So we now have four Community Evening Resource Centers open to service youth who can go voluntarily and some who will go involuntarily. And my goal is to have a center in every single police division here in the city of Philadelphia. So thank you, colleagues. Thank you for your support, and please spread the word about a positive, safe space and resource for young people and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good job. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. First, I just wanted to acknowledge, I have some supporters and community leaders who showed up on their own. I didn't expect to see them here today, who spent the last couple weeks with me, and I just want to thank them personally for taking time out of their schedule and joining me here today. And I just want to also personally take a moment and thank each and every one of my colleagues personally today for your text messages, your calls, your words of encouragement, your prayers, and just want to personally say it feels good to be back in this beautiful, magnificent body to work toward pushing the city of Philadelphia forward. Just want to personally say thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, not just as a councilman and as a true friend. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, and like everybody else said, welcome back, Member Johnson. I did want to just elaborate a little bit on the NIL bill that I introduced earlier. First of all, I want to take a moment to thank all of my colleagues who co-sponsored, Councilmember Bass, Councilmember Driscoll, Councilmember O'Neil, Councilmember Brooks, Councilmember Gaultier, Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, as well as Councilmember Squilla. Leading up to this bill, we did some research as it relates to the impact that we feel like this could have on young people. And when you look at the three major sports right now, two of our teams are playing tonight with the Eagles, as well as the Phillies in the World Series. And then when you add basketball to that, we were able to identify over forty athletes who started off as students in the city of Philadelphia. Most recently, last night, the San Antonio Spurs allowed, I believe, Jordan Hall, who's a Philadelphia native, to enter his first NBA game and to play his first NBA game as he was called up. The reason that this is important, and we talked about it yesterday when we had the press conference, is that a young person without the proper support could sign a contract at the age of fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen that could give somebody the legal rights to their image for five, ten, twenty years or the rest of their life. This council body is stepping up as the first legislative body in the entire country to make sure that every child has the resources that they need to put themselves in a position to be able to sign a quality contract, to understand the fiscal responsibilities, and to make sure that they're not signing theirself away to something that might, that they might end up regretting later on. Some of these athletes include Kalia Copper, who was the WNBA Finals MVP, who this body recognized. If you went back and looked at Kalia in high school, we might, we, everybody couldn't predict that that's where she would be. If you look at a guy like Will Parks, who's playing for the New York Jets right now, when he was in high school, everybody didn't know that he was going to be a professional football player. So I just wanted to reiterate the importance of this bill, the importance of the protection of our youth and young people. When we give young people the support, the resources, and the protection that they need, the students who testified here today have shown us that our children are not only the future, but they can blow us away right now with the work that they're doing. So I wanted to, again, thank all of my colleagues for your support with the NIL bill. We are very proud of what we are doing as it relates to fighting for our children, as it relates to leading the nation with this conversation, and we look forward to continuing the work to make sure that our young people have every platform and every opportunity to be their best self and to maximize their potential. Thank you again, colleagues, and thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilman. That completes our speeches for today and our calendar. And I'd like to take a moment to wish Councilwoman Bass a happy birthday. Really.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Twenty-one, twenty-one. If anyone's wondering.
Man, I thought you, wow, you're younger than I thought. I thought you were twen-, I thought you were twenty-two.
No, nope, nope.
There you go. Claim it, claim it. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I move the council to stand adjourned until Thursday, November seventeenth, 2022, at 10:00 AM.
Thank you. It's been seconded in, council to stand adjourned until Thursday, November seventeenth, 2022, 10:00 AM. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Be safe. Love you guys.